Other settlements that we had were... This year was Buto. They withdrew the 14 and 15 appeals. And we actually, Jack was able to get those 14 and 15 appeals withdrawn. One year withdrawn and one year dismissed. So without... Not sitting here trying to say how great he is, but without Jack Pigeon, I'm not able to do my job. I need him to talk to the attorneys. I will do the number crunching, give them to Jack. Jack will sit with the attorneys, talk to them over the phone, email them. I've never seen a gentleman with so many emails in my entire life. He's got every one from day one, but...
I know someone with a few more.
And he is able to...
But he actually deals with this.
...negotiate the tax appeals on behalf of the borough. And it's, you know, together we... I enjoy working with Jack quite a bit. The... If you have any other questions, I could get into some more, you know, discuss some more issues on it. But basically, we're at 20 pending appeals at this moment. We've settled eight. We're trying to reduce that number to as little as possible for this year. We have four, 1, 2, 3, 4 pending with Altamari, which is the Volkswagen owned by the dealership. We have a couple lots in the quarry that are under appeal that we're trying to settle. Property that's across the street from the Volkswagen dealership and an older home on Finley. So we're trying to work on those right now. The Burnsville Library, we've been working hard on that for since 2012 to negotiate that one, and we're working hard on that one. And hopefully, we think we can resolve that this year, which makes it a fifth appeal. I'm meeting... The Paraganos have residential appeals on two of their properties. I'm meeting with them over the next couple of weeks. So we're actively getting involved in these appeals that hopefully can reduce this number so that it, you know, we don't have to have 20-some-odd appeals pending carrying over each year. And I think a lot of it, too, I should mention this, I think a lot of it, too, has to do with the... Aside the real estate market, the economy, you know? The combination of the two has, you know, created, you know, a large number of appeals. But I also think the third is because we have such, you know, large properties here that I think a lot of the attorneys have been trying to solicit work in Burnsville. And that's why we really have so many. But hopefully, we can limit that number.
Well, you know, Sid, like there's 10 this year?
I'm sorry?
10 new ones this year, if I remember correctly?
Seven this year.
Oh, seven, sure.
11 last year, and the year before that, 14, nine.
Yeah, but, I mean, is that a lot? It doesn't seem like a lot. It seems pretty normal to me.
No, it's not a lot of appeals that we have each year. It's just that the ones that we've had during that tough times of, you know, during that 12, 13, 14 years, when, you know, that we have some of those that are pending. We... Right now, we only have 1, 2... We probably have 12... 11 out of the 20 that are either just 2016 appeals or 15 and 16. So Jack and I decided, besides working on the current ones, we're trying to get... We're trying to settle the ones that have been out there for four or five years. It's right now in the court systems in New Jersey, there's over 48,000 tax appeals pending. There's eight judges. They're increasing it to maybe another judge or two. It's not the highest we were at. About four years ago, five years ago, we were about 58,000 tax appeals, so they've cut it down to about 48. So it takes a long time to get a trial date. And that's why a lot of these cases sit for a long time, because you sometimes take five years to get a trial date. And then now you're writing five years of appraisals to go to court. So... And the expense goes both ways. It's on the owner and the borough as well, you know?
And there's nothing we can do to, you know, minimize that letter that's going out from attorneys. And that's their right to...
Just, it's business.
It's business.
I can't take it personal, so I look at it just...
Go ahead.
I used to take it personal when I was younger.
Jack, with this recent report you sent to us, it seemed like you filed a number of just recently small claims discovery requests.
Yes.
What exactly is that?
There are two levels in the tax court. And it doesn't work that way on Burnsville, but it's small claims cases and regular cases. But the small claims cutoff is anything that's residential.
Doesn't matter whether the house is worth it?
Exactly. So most houses, that works fine, but here we have... So you get less discovery, you know, where you're able to ask several questions in that small claims discovery. Whereas in a regular case, a commercial case, you can put down interrogatories, 15 to 20 standing interrogatories, and then 10 additional ones, which we do in all the commercial cases. So it's just a different level of discovery. And that goes both ways. They'll ask for discovery from Jack, and he'll have to know which he and I will have to provide to their attorneys as well. So there's a lot of paperwork going back and forth.
Anyone else?
No. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, Doug, I'm gonna move you up on the agenda with the library. Any presentation for us at the parking?
Sure.
Yeah, come here.
With regard to the new parking ordinances, we had a few changes since last time I was here in what we're doing at the library. So what we did is we updated, working with Jack, we updated the plan here to reflect those changes. The construction office and the zoning are all moving over to the... Over to the library downstairs on the lower level. And so this area here, this is Anderson Avenue, Anderson Hill Road. So these first spots here will be for the construction office, you know, for patrons as well coming into the building. The hatched area here, that'll be for the public library employees. Okay? And pretty much the rest stays the same. This is for the lower level patrons. This is for Morristown Medical, further lease, where we took off there. We have two spots for the New Jersey Therapy on the first floor, and also one spot for Quest. Okay, those are tenants at the lower level. The yellow spots are the old library, and those they have further purchase. These spots I didn't designate. The other thing we did is we changed some of these to permit or four-hour parking. So I think this would give council a lot of flexibility. You can either just leave it to four-hour parking. If you want to go ahead and issue some permits, they would fit real long here. So if you wanted to put the school here, you could do that. Or, you know, any changes that come along down the road. I think that area out by Church Street, you know, it's the most flexibility to address those issues.
How many places was it leaving, patients?
There was five spots.
These 45 open spots.
Were the patients in the library?
Yes. Not counting...
Does he know about that?
As far as Jack, you had... You cannot have the construction office ones in this area. And, you know, several other changes we made. As per our discussion at the last meeting, we added five PGL spaces for high school students up on Church Street.
Okay, so they're going here.
They're going there.
Yeah.
And then with respect to the individual spots for tenants, we took out the tenant's name and just said to be designated.
For the suite, just the suite.
Actually, we didn't put it by suite.
Okay.
The council discussed it last time.
Yeah, okay.
As designated by the Zillow management.
Okay. So for the purple area, which is a permit of the four hours, that would remain the same. And then the council could just decide to issue the permits to...
Right, but I specifically put in there that the five bicycle...
Oh, we did, okay.
And then we'll be subject to the four-hour limit.
Right.
It would be covered by the permit.
Yeah. So the duration will be there, right? The four-hour duration.
We're...
Yes.
Right. So with all that said, we can introduce at the next meeting, so directly at the construction office sometime.
But Doug, all those 45 white ones are also limited to four hours, correct?
Correct.
But in theory, those people are supposed to be in the library. There's supposed to be an owner, rent the car in the library.
So the patients of the library.
Right, so have we made... In those orange, those first ones off Anderson Hill, we sort of had a never-ending issue with the doctors' offices across the street directing all their patients to basically those orange slots. Have we communicated with the doctors and told them that they need to make sure that their patients go...
I think we should do that after the...
Because, you know, all of a sudden, they're gonna take up the zoning office spots.
Right, exactly.
I mean, people tend to duck into places and save themselves 50 steps. Most of us probably need the exercise, but that's okay. I'll speak for myself.
Yeah, that would be a good idea. I can go over and meet with them after we pass the ordinance, give them a copy of the ordinance, and let them know that, you know, we're going to enforce that. The signage will be there.
The signage will be there. The hard thing is that you're not whether that, you know...
Right.
...blue Honda belongs to...
Yeah.
The dental patient.
Yeah. And again, and this is also going to be for patrons of the construction office, so there should be a lot of further in and out. If you start getting complaints about, you know, there's some place to park, then we're gonna have to, you know, monitor it and close it.
And what are the people from the library park? The volunteers and the actual employees, the...
We have employee parking for the folks up here. We have 13 spots, and that's good because they work late, especially this time of year.
So it's close by.
So they come out the front door. It's well lit. You just relapse the library lot, so it's well lit there. It's really close to the front door.
And does it question the parking here?
I'm sorry?
Does it question the time of the place?
Should I comment on that?
Sure.
This is a little different than the parking, the four-hour parking that's here now. You're saying that that's exclusively for the library patrons?
We're gonna mark it just for our parking. We're not gonna... I would envision putting signs, you know, "Library of Patients" on it.
Well, we would have no way of knowing who's in those spots. I mean, right now, the parking, the four-hour parking for businesses are using those spots as well as library patrons up to four hours.
The patrons or the businesses, too, for the business owners?
Patron, maybe both. We have no way of knowing once the spot is filled. The only thing we can regulate is the time that they're in that spot. We have no idea where they're going. So I would just, you know, I would just suggest that you leave it four-hour parking with the knowledge that, you know, there'll be 45 spots available for people who want to go in the library, as well as people who may be visiting some of the area businesses, but to restrict this all the way to the library displacing parking that's currently being used by businesses in town, that will have nowhere else to go. That's all.
But it's all four hours, chief.
It's all four hours. Yes, it is, but you keep saying library patrons, library patients. So I'm just assuming with the way it was discussed, that that's what the ordinance was gonna be, that's...
No, just four-hour parking.
Okay, four-hour parking.
Yeah, so it's fine. Because we do get some overflow. We have these spots here that are for the patrons of the lower level, the doctors' offices and such. We do get some overflow in the folks who park out here, put their rent 15 minutes, they run down, they give blood, they're back out. So we really, even when they have events, we really haven't had an issue at the library with parking. We had an event there yesterday, as a matter of fact, at the library, so there were about a hundred people in there, and we didn't have any issues. You know, the medical offices are closed on the second night, so you can't all those. So it works out pretty well.
Yeah, at least in the weekends.
Yeah.
And for the construction office, I mean, you don't get a lot of visitors up there, do you?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's all the folks coming in for their permits and...
Getting permits and stuff. Is that enough parking there?
Yes, yeah. This will actually be much improved over what we have today, because now we only have those two or three spots in the front.
Okay.
So, and then our inspectors are in now. You know, the inspectors come in, they get their sheets.
Okay.
So they maybe park there for 15 minutes, they run out, they do their inspections, they come back, you know, drop them off to Terry, and Terry inputs them stuff. I mean, most of the inspectors that we have, the bulk of their time spent at the borough is actually on the road, you know, visiting the homes, doing the actual inspection. So I think this will work out great.
Okay. Doug, when we were here, we tried to make some minor adjustments so that any changes that need to happen, if it's new, if we need to put in some support, we didn't want to have to do an ordinance change at the same time, so that's why I tried to give some...
Gotcha.
Facility changes.
Absolutely.
Doug, if that's gonna be revised again, then I'll give you this one.
Okay, great.
One that's not back.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thanks, Doug.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doug. Thanks, Doug. I had approval of minutes, September 26th and October 11th, 2016. Mr. D. Forte was absent on October 11th. Any changes to the minutes? I want to entertain a motion.
Mm-hmm.
Moved by Mr. Delio. Second by council on weight, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The ayes have it. All right, open session. At this point in the meeting, the mayor and council welcome comments from any member of the public to help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit the opportunity for anyone who wishes to be heard. Speakers shall limit their comments to five minutes. If reading from a prepared statement, please provide a copy and email a copy to the clerk's office after making your comments, so it may be properly reflected in the minutes. Anybody from the public? All right, seeing none, I'll close the open session. Move to ordinances. entertain a motion to move that ordinance 16-17-26 supplementing and amending Chapter 2 of the Borough Code entitled Administration to allow borough council members to attend regular meetings by telephone if the meeting would otherwise have to be canceled due to the lack of a form. Be introduced by title, passed on first reading, published according to law, and that a public hearing be scheduled for a meeting beginning 7:00 p.m. November 14, 2016.
I'll move.
Moved by Councilman Schmidt, second by Councilman Birburn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. entertain a motion to move that ordinance 16-17-27 concerning sewer connection fees and sewer user rates and allocation in amending Chapter 16 of the Borough Code entitled Sewer Regulations. Be introduced by title, passed on first reading, published according to law, and that a public hearing be scheduled for a meeting beginning 7:00 p.m. November 14, 2016.
Move.
Hold on a second. I think the ordinance is actually 17...
Oh, it's...
17-27?
Yes, did I say that?
And you said 16.
Oh.
It says 16.
16 dash 17-27.
They're all 16.
It's kind of being introduced this year, but the ordinance number is 17-27. The 16 is the year.
Okay. Why is it saying right here 17 dash 17-27?
It's a... That's a mistake.
Okay.
I read off the paper copies.
Hand that to them, sir.
That's weird.
That came from... I didn't prepare this ordinance. Then I'll have you do it.
Okay. I just...
Yeah, it's correct on the agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah. entertain a motion.
I'll move.
Moved by Councilman Birburn.
Circle.
Second by Councilman Delio. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The ayes have it. entertain a motion to move that ordinance 16-17-28 concerning parking regulations on Oakwood Avenue and amending Chapter 7 of the Borough Code entitled Traffic. Be introduced by title, passed on first reading, published according to law, and that a public hearing be scheduled for a meeting beginning 7:00 p.m. November 14, 2016. A motion?
I will.
Motion by Councilman Mulley.
Second.
Second by Councilman Schmidt.
Right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The ayes have it. All right, we have Resolution 16-166 through 16-198. Anyone want to pull any further discussion, comment?
Oh, 166.
166, okay. Anyone else? All right, Peter, 166.
Yeah, Jack, I've sent some emails back to court, but just one of the...
Yeah, I recommend that we carry this to the next meeting. I have obtained copies of the Homeowners Association documents preserved, and we've got status reports, and the Homeowners Association Corporation, we've acted, but I think I should check further to make sure it's actually a functioning Homeowners Association, not just being carried forward by the builder before we release bond.
Okay.
All right.
That's agreeable.
Now, the problem with the detention system, it is open space in the finding of its resolution, so we do have recourse, but it'd be a lot easier just to take care of it.
All right, so everyone's okay with carrying 166?
Yep.
All right, anyone else? entertain a motion to move 16-186 through 16-198.
I'll move.
Moved by Councilman Youngblood, second by council on the weight. Roll call, please.
Mr. Birburn?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Delio?
Uh, yes.
Mr. D. Forte?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Wade?
Yes.
Mr. Youngblood?
Yes.
Okay, reported a municipal attorney. Anybody have questions for Jack or comments?
Something for close.
Something for closed session, all right. Anyone else? All right, item number 10, council committee reports, public safety.
Uh, no, we haven't had any since the last meeting.
Chief, do you have anything?
Is there anything?
The September report was submitted in your package.
Right.
And there's all the...
All right, finance and personnel.
Matt Latsman. We've had several meetings. Ralph has got some proposals coming towards us, to us, and I think we've seen and heard around a number of things that have been changed in terms of taking care of our facilities and maintenance, and that's been all like that, so I can sure all of it. Anything else?
Anyone else? Questions, comments? Okay. 10C, engineering, technology, and public works.
We haven't had a meeting since last... Before last council, so John, you have any update on some of the projects?
Yeah, a quick update on Mullins Lane. The tree removal crew's been out there. JCP and L has been out. We're waiting then to get back to us and advise us which of the trees that we said we would try to save must come down because of conflict with the utility poles. Expect that shortened. On Meeker Road, the additional curb that's been requested has been staked off. I'm anticipating that the contractor will be out there next week. It's probably the same crew that's doing Mullins Lane. Right now, Meeker's a little bit more important to get that curb work done than it is the sidewalk work on Mullins. And we're waiting for utility to relocate it. So again, I'm anticipating Meeker Road will continue next week. Waiting to hear back from Hutton, who's our contractor on Post Kuhnheart, that other, the other job that was held up by the TTF debacle. I have not heard back from them. They're obviously on another job. We'll be tweaking them to try and get them to move. Those are the big things that we're working on right now.
John, are we gonna close Meeker?
Yes.
I think we should be putting out the signboard.
Well, we don't know exactly when yet, but as soon as we get a schedule, we'll get some information up, get it on the webpage. But yeah, we absolutely, unfortunately, we absolutely have to shut the road.
Well, I assume so, but people are short-lived and celebrating the opening of 202.
John, how about milling and paves?
Uh, oh, thank you.
Yes.
This week, we will be weather permitting. We'll be milling and paving Peachcroft Drive is the big one on the list, and then cover a couple smaller ones to round it out, Mountain, Hillside, and South Street. It is supposed to rain on Thursday, so I expect the schedule to move, but early next week, those roads should be gone. And it'll bring us up to about five miles for the year, which is a really nice target number to work towards, and would be more if we could add Meeker and Post Kuhnheart to it. Expect we will complete the Post Kuhnheart drainage this year, but that's gonna put us in a kind of a pickle with getting it paved, so we'll probably get that paved next spring.
How dangerous will that be this way?
It won't be. The contractor's doing a really good job with the base repairs over the trenching. The road department's been on it several times, patching it. It's a bumpy road, but it's not dangerous, I can stretch the imagination.
You see, I have drainage now to get the water off.
Right.
Any other committee reports? Bill, I'm in.
Yeah, on Shade Tree, we're having some issues in terms of delays potentially getting tree removal permit requests inspected, so the committee's looking at a backup or two for the primary inspector. So they think they can work through it with the members of the committee without having to, you know, add a paid person, but they're working on that. So... And the other issue I have, I've been on Shade Tree now for two years. The committee meetings are Thursday mornings at 8:00 to 8:30. I have conflicts both this October, November, and December. I don't know if we want to just wait and address that at reorg, or if somebody can cover those last two meetings of the year, but I've got a problem...
Can we move it to nighttime?
Yeah. And it doesn't have to be published, though.
Kennedy, we already published it, that we're meeting it.
It's an advisory committee, but that group has been meeting in the morning for as
long as I can remember.
Which Thursday of the month?
So you'd have to check with them.
My suspicion is if we change the meetings, most of the committee wouldn't show, which would defeat the purpose. So, I don't know. We can continue the discussions.
I may be able to help you out, but it's only a short term.
We're talking about one or two meetings?
Two more meetings.
Two more meetings.
I'm sure we can cover it.
I'll cut your grass. We'll work it out.
Oh, you don't know what you're offering. You do the lease...
Go for the mulch.
All right, thank you. We'll have a conversation there. Jack, one question on H-PAC with the lease transfer for the Dunster Squibb property. I know we had to wait six months. We took it as far as we could go during the summer, but then there was some waiting period we had to get through. Is it on, is it calendared for December?
No, it's actually down before the green acres in Chippewa.
Okay.
As soon as I get that, then I'll get this solved.
Okay, so there's nothing we need to be doing at this point?
Nothing we need to be doing, order the check.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anybody else with committee reports? Any comments or questions?
Yeah, Open Space and Rec met last week to discuss the master plaintiff adjustments that are ongoing. Rec provided their input to the documents. Peter, anything else to add?
No, it was a good meeting. I think there was a lot of, you know, learning involved, but we got some info and dispatch and a review draft and the update to include the contribution from Rec. contribution from Rec, he, um, is, I think he's at this afternoon, and we're going to planning board, first meeting in November, and then up for adoption the following meeting up to that.
All right.
So things can move along quickly, the Rec, we scheduled their normal meeting time so that everybody could get together.
All right. Seeing no further.
Environmental conditions, still having real meetings, working on risk components, um, and I, I, the acting chair, Paul Stewart, has been filming for quite some time. Chair has designed, I'd like to see if we can move that position permanent, she's been working very hard, and she's...
Yeah, seamless transition, she's very good.
Yeah, on the subject of Paul, a couple months back, they made a presentation about the wells.
Yes.
And it was delayed, but we have never resolved that issue.
There, I think the council asked for some other information, and there were some concerns about some things that some members thought were anecdotal. So the committee's been working and trying to come up with some answers on that, that's not used yet. And they're shooting for our November fourteenth meeting, so either the fourteenth or the one after, depending upon when they get their reports together. But thank you for bringing that up. They're all, they stood and ran forward, Danny wanted to run forward earlier, and I said, listen, you know, we've got some big questions, and I think it's important to come back with those answered.
All right, anyone else?
Nope.
All right, seeing no further, I'll move to item number eleven, items of business, eleven A, Somerset Ambulance Shared Service Agency, um, chief is out. Well, you're here right now, okay.
Just came to see what was going on.
Okay.
Well, today, I mean, I was reading it that we did currently provide backup, I mean...
For a, for a fee.
For a fee, but it didn't really have, I mean, sort of like signup, you know, do you want to be a full-time twenty-four-hour member, do you want to be a backup?
Well, this is an outside organization that's managing that, um, group, or I guess listening to business for them or something. I don't even think, um, the fire company was contacted. Our thinking was that if you were interested in more information, you might need to get them involved. This, this, this comes in, this, this came last year, I think, and the year before last. It's an option that's out there, I don't know how it works, I guess some other towns have used it. I don't know what the costs are, we've got no information except this letter.
I, I would consider it, I thought, people would do this every day.
Yes, that's okay.
I certainly can give input if anybody wants to.
Sure.
Speak up.
So, I mean, basically, as you know, we're a hundred percent volunteer. What's going on right now is both Morris and Somerset are in the process of trying to find a way to back up the volunteers. This agency that's here that's putting in for the bid really is a county agency. They've been providing services for the county, but they aren't run by the county, they're actually a for-profit company, is my understanding. Both Morris and Somerset counties are working on trying to find a way to back up the volunteer systems at no cost to municipalities. Morris is a little bit ahead of Somerset that way, so that is taking place. My only concern about stuff coming from Somerset County here, and I am a fire coordinator, I am a county official, is that we don't utilize Somerset County hospitals, EMS, and even when we had our own fire here, we use Marsh County because they're closer neighbors and they have more assets available to us, and we utilize, um, Marsh County more. I have been in contact with the chief, who's been working very vigilantly of getting EMTs on the police force so that, you know, hopefully sometime in the future, he'll be able to, you know, possibly kill us a guy during the day that can actually do EMS, but that's gonna come at the cost to the council of putting another man on. And working that through with the chief. I did Atlantic, I spoke with them briefly. They will do a shared services agreement where they respond in on a second call basis. So say we can't get an ambulance out, we can call them, they will come in, but they will charge the patient's insurance. I don't know if that's something the council wants to look at, I'm not sure we are there yet, I think it's something that we have to think about in the future. I mean, we, we do have problems some days more than others. Burnsville is very fortunate in the sense that, um, that the road department hired another young, young individual this year who responds and drives all the EMS calls, so thank you for, for that. That has been a huge help because that gives, you know, one out of two or three people right off the bat, out of the, you know, right out of the borough. I really think that going forward, we are gonna have to talk about it, but I don't think that entering in with a private organization is something that we need to do. I did speak to Ralph, um, via, I believe Sandy or, or one of the other individuals, about the fact that Burnsville County is actually looking at putting up paid services in. And they're looking at doing it with their own people and setting up their own EMS squad. That's something that I have a little concern about because they use us heavily for mutual aid now. And if they should go paid, I just want to be sure that if we need them, they're going to still respond here if they're paying their employees. So that's something that I do think that we just have to make sure that we stay in contact with them as they move forward. If in fact, they decide, or one of their other options is to go with Atlantic apparently, they have a couple different options going on, and I'm not privy to the exact, you know, cost or nature of their activities, but if they would go with Atlantic, maybe it's something that we would want to talk to Atlantic at that point, so that there was no fee paid by the council, or by the borough, to have service here and also possibly get an ambulance that's located close by. We currently do have a medic unit from Marsh County Memorial in Liberty Corner, so our medic unit is much closer than it's ever been. If Robert Wood approaches us, I would say my concern to, to the council would be that Robert Wood used to have an ambulance in Bedminster. They now respond to Bedminster during the day, sometimes from the mall in Bridgewater, sometimes from the hospital in Somerville. And that's a long drive, and you get the wrong amount of traffic on two eighty-seven, and I think you're gonna have a problem. So, I mean, I think that there's no right answer or wrong answer here, but I do think it's something we're gonna have to talk about in the future.
Um, a fire official?
I'm sorry?
Fire official, um, that works for us.
John Sable, yes.
Yeah, he's a paid employee.
He's a paid employee of the department.
Is, is he one of your...
He does not usually respond, he's on the fire department, but he usually does not respond to EMS calls. I mean, that's something, you know, I believe he is still an EMT, so it is something that, you know, could possibly be an option.
Because sometimes, um, they kind of incorporated that into there. Because they're local and they're, hey, you know, that is someone that...
Yes, I mean, there's a lot of, the PPEC Gladstone, you have to be an EMT if you join the road department there. They actually staff the first day of squad all day. So it's just, you know, it's something that each municipality is handling in their own way. And, you know, I'd like to say that we are gonna be able to provide volunteer service forever, but I don't know if that's a reality. But right now, I believe we're okay, but we should have conversations going forward. Thank you for that.
Anybody else? Chief, thank you.
So at this point, in terms of the request, we'll take no action?
No action, yes. All right, eleven B, library parking ordinance.
We moved it up.
We have a draft ordinance in our thing, so we worked that out already, so that's complete. Anybody else have any comments or concerns on that? All right, animal control contract and resolution.
Yeah, I drafted a new contract, but then the extension of the existing contract is one remaining issue, bad insurance. So it's in progress, I'll, I'll bring it back in the next meeting.
Just table it to live.
Just table that till we're not going to go to fourteen?
Yes, please, it's similar to our other issues, just want to carry work and compensation on itself.
All right, and correspondence, seeing we have none. Anyone else before we move to the second open session? All right, at this point in the meeting, I'll open up for a second open session. Anyone from the public wishing to be heard? All right, I'll close the open session. Council members, we have anything before we go into...
In this, in our package, there was this cooperative pricing system that Doug had inserted, I, I was a little confused as to whether we use it. I mean, they did have prices for, I mean, it's, it's vendor-paid for, like, electric and stuff like that, I just wasn't sure what it was taking, why to look at.
Yeah, um...
I think that was the carpet.
Yeah, I think that's, yeah, I think that's, we're in a number of different cooperatives in, uh, we are looking for carpeting at the library, and here in the borough, actually, I think they have the best prices, this particular co-op that Doug has done.
So are we voting on joining it, or have...
We did, I'm writing, this is resolution one ninety-two.
Oh, okay, I missed a little reservation, pardon.
It's a number of, a number of, because I only have to talk to the good things.
Okay.
Right, right.
All right, anyone else?
In terms of the, your tuck, trees, those are individual, has permits and tuck in that? Were we gonna, uh, build that, um, possibly to some internal staff? It was, it was mentioned, but we, at the moment, the, the individual or individuals are not, they haven't taken any further. Maybe you could get, get, because we have, we do have to address the, these things.
Well, I don't, what are you...
No, we're talking about, um, the, signing some of those responsibilities to some of our building department staff.
Oh, tree inspection?
Yeah, we're the town with the, presumably under Doug, I think he said, the, um, building department.
Half a dozen a month, it's...
Yeah. Figure out other side of things. Yeah, well, we, we can get some, Phil, you could ask, you know, we need some time into it, I guess, to see exactly what we're talking about.
I guess too, Ralph, how many, how many inspections they have to do.
Right, that's what I said, you know, what, what we're talking about.
Choosing on the report.
See who could be available. Do that.
Yeah, there's mighty components.
Or might have to, you know, see that other ways.
We, uh, we know how many permits are, permit applications are received, but when I asked the current inspector on Shade Tree how long they take typically, he said there's no typical answer, it depends on how the trees are tagged, what's involved, he said it can take as little as a half hour or as long as half a day. That's where he started.
You mean when the whole...
When there's a big, you know, a big project, so I thought that that was...
Maybe we can get that into our, um, permit explanation of what needs to be done, and sort of, you know, smoothly and quickly.
Would the committee look at that, and...
I think it's a prior ordinance, it's, it's, you know, over the Shade Tree, so it probably is more...
More detail in permit applications.
Yeah, that's a pretty broad scope there, half an hour to half a day.
No, because sometimes somebody may request that, you know, they'd be allowed to take fifty, sixty trees down. So have they been marked, and what's there, so, you know, two trees in the front yard is very simple versus...
Well, you're talking about multiples because you have, you have the rights, you know, you can't just sort of say, well, there's one on the left, you know, it's outside, that's not, you know, it's got the tag.
Right. So we're, the committee's working on it, trying to make sure we update all those procedures and keep everything running smoothly.
Will you let me know if there's anything we need to do to help you out or something? Okay.
All right, anyone else? All right, I want to entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session, we'll discuss personnel matters. Jack, what else do we have on the agenda, anything else?
I have my current report.
Okay.
I'll move.
Moved by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilman Youngblood, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Are we coming out?
Possibly, yes. We may be coming out on the personnel matter.
All right, everybody only walk about six feet away. What's wrong with you walking? We don't need a twenty-minute break.